I hope it's a good bird. Are you about ready? There's Lonnie. No, voice is not coming. Hi Lon. Is there echo in here? How you doing? Okay. You're a sick person. Are we on? I guess we're on. Rebecca. I don't know. I got a soft voice. Horse gnaw. I don't have pockets.
All right, why are you coughing? Now I'm gonna put on my mask.
I am coughing at the result of after reflex.
Oh.
I call that.
You had feedback, huh? I'd like to call, meeting to order, would you join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly is absent. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins? Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Best?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mayor Croft?
Here.
And the town attorney is on video, just can't see.
Inter-election presentations, proclamations, we have none. Call the public, call the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to dragging staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration, decision later date, or responding to criticism. I have some people here that want 10 minutes. Who's the person that asked for 10 minutes? Okay, are you in a group together? Are you a spokesperson or?
Pardon?
Before, okay. Is there anybody but this group that would like to speak on call to the public? All right, sir, come up and give us your name. You have your 10 minutes. Right behind the podium, tell us who you are. We will listen to you. I assume you're speaking for the rest of the group. And what I'm gonna ask is, if you're gonna say the same thing that he is gonna say, please don't come up and speak. We'd like to hear it only one time.
Yeah, I agree, they can be saying the same thing. I'll be very brief.
Okay.
Okay, we're all four here to represent Bright Star Community, okay, on Meridian East Road, dust abatement and pavement issues. All right, we've got a petition here. And I believe we had 61 sign up on the petition. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Jim Milligan. That's M.I.L.L.I.G.A.N.
Will you spell that again, sir?
M.I.L.L.I.G.A.N.
Okay.
Okay, great. I'll be brief here. I relocated to Chino Valley two years ago, okay? And we picked this community for one reason. We had plenty others to choose from in the area. And my daughter's family also relocated after we spoke to them, okay? They're also in the community. And just looking out at everybody, okay? There's fathers, mothers, uncles, aunts, whatever, family, friends, the whole bit. The first thing I look at, and I've been around, I've been from North Dakota in my career, all the way down to New Mexico, Utah, Wyoming, Colorado. I retired here for a couple of reasons. My family's health and safety. Okay, now this road we're talking about was paved or chip sealed, as you call it down here. And I wouldn't have bought my house if I would have known a year later, the road would have been ripped up. My house is immediately adjacent to it, okay? I have my grandkids come over right now. They can't even play outside. We can't enjoy a day outside because of the prevailing winds, all right? And now we've been dealt with something else here on our health and safety, the COVID thing. Okay? Everyone, I'm sorry, I got my mask, but everybody's health and safety is at risk. I can deal with that. But this road out back, I can deal with it too, and this is how I'm gonna do it. And I hope these gentlemen do the same. Something needs to be done. And we're reaching out to you, okay? And that's all I've gotta say. I got a petition here. Bob, would you like to take a moment?
My name is Bob Blackmore. I live at 2590 Solar View Drive. I'm here to talk about East Meridian Parkway. The removal of the searant has done three things. It's forced the homeowners out of their backyards and into their homes. It's created an unhealthy environment to live in because of the dust, and it's devalued the homes that are adjacent or in the rest of the subdivision also. Because when you sell your house, you have comparable sales to go with. You can't hardly sell a house on our block. The dust is miserable. Much of the Perkinsville road traffic is now traveling on Meridian through our subdivision. That particular piece of road was built to fail. The road was, department stated in an email, that's right in here, that we're giving to you, that it was intended, that portion was intended to last only X amount of years and it exceeded its lifetime. The rest of them that are contiguous to that are still in good shape. So they didn't build it right to begin with. It was designed to fail. One of the cities failed is policing. Well, our traffic goes by there, we've got two signs up now that are 15 miles an hour because of the dust. But people go through there 50 miles an hour. You can't believe it. I sent an email to all of you, asking you to come sit on my front porch, because I face that road. And we could watch the traffic for an hour or two and discuss it. I never got any email back from any of you. There's been no traffic monitors on that road to check how much traffic is there. So you guys have absolutely no idea if there's 1,000 cars a day or there's three. I mean, something has to be done. There's a more excessive weight limit on that road. We get trucks from the cement trucks, the gravel trucks. Even the city water department comes that way because they got a big tank over there right off of our subdivision. We asked for a four-way stop. The road department said, all you're gonna do is get excessive speeding and more accidents when you put in a four-way stop. Geez, they put a few other ones around town last year. I haven't heard of a whole bunch of accidents going on there. We asked for speed bumps before the road was, when it was still seal-coated. And they said, we'd get sued for the damages to the cars. We asked for speed traps. And we had one cop show up for 20 minutes one day. I went out and talked to him a little bit, because I was one of the ones that was pushing to get him there. He said, yeah, we're supposed to pay special attention to this. I see cops parked in the parking lot by the pool and I play pickleball longer than he spent or any cop has spent in our neighborhood. We've been handling the problems and excuses aren't gonna fix it. We have remedies. We got recycled asphalt. There's a pile in town here that we got city trucks to use. And I don't know if the recycled asphalt is yours or not to use, but there's a huge pile. There's a mountain of it in this town. You could put chloride treatment and seal that road so the dust doesn't come up. You could oil it. And you could seal coat it and pass a cost on to the developer when he sells the lots over there. There's a lot of things you could do. Let's do a positive gesture. Let's do something. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else you'd like to speak?
Obviously, I'm from the same neighborhood. My name is Morris Dumont. And at the risk of being redundant, I too have also contacted you. We have a persistent problem. We have been there, my family and with our neighbors, we've been there since '05, '06. This has always been an issue, whether it's been paved, whether it has not, it's always been an issue. And I realize that there are situations in a town that I don't know about, many of us don't. That's why you guys are here. But you also have an obligation to answer to a legitimate predicament in our neighborhood. It's in it. We have health concerns, safety issues. Not to mention, as Bob previously mentioned, this pandemic thing. We have to have this fixed. No more priorities. As I say, it's been there 10 years. It's next. It should be on the list. And it is our right and our duty to bring this to your attention in a public forum. It is your duty to fix it. No more excuses. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, can I get him to spell his first and last name?
Who's that?
Real quick, can I get, spell his first and last name?
First and last name, please.
Morris, M.O.R.R.I.S. Dumont, D.U.M.O.N.T. Thank you.
Is this on the same ish, is this on the same issue or different votes?
My name is Anthony Mazzella. I bought the last new house on Solar View Drive six years ago. It was a Mandalay home. And they had built five homes in that area and they had a few sell. And I moved from the southern part of the town down off a road due south to move up there where there was a cleaner and nicer neighborhood. The black, all the roads were paved, the back road was paved. It was a very nice place to live up until about six months ago. The road deteriorated after a pretty good storm we had a couple of years ago that kind of washed it out. Town went up there and tried to patch it up a little bit here and there, but it just, they just, it got, it was too far gone to the point where they couldn't just patch it anymore. It had to be resurfaced, re-chipped or something. Now they've, that was the road and made it very convenient for the people to live up above us there. They can travel as fast as they wanna travel and throw all the dust on us they wanna throw. The wind blows 99% of the time from the southwest. It blows the dust right over that wall. It looks like a San Francisco fog. And believe me, I lived in the Bay Area and it's not fog, it's dust and dirt. Our backyards are covered with dirt. You can't go outside. We have health issues. Some of our neighbors, one of them just had open heart surgery. I have cardiovascular disease, a lung problem. I can't be outside and breathe that stuff. I have a 12-year-old granddaughter that lives with us that has acute asthma, can't even go outside and play because of the dust. It's to the point where it's just, we can't live there like that. We're only asking to repair that to the end of the wall. It's only two tenths of a mile or something like that. It doesn't take that much to put some sort of grindings down or something down, chip seal again, who knows, whatever, just to get the dust down. It's very, very, very uncomfortable there. And that dust blows so much that my house backs up to that wall. And when I'm in my backyard, I can see it going between the houses, clear over to the other street. That's how much that dust blows. And it's a powder. It's not just, I mean, it's, they claim it's not a gravel road, it's a dirt road. And that dirt just flies, even sometimes when there's no cars, the wind will pick it up and blow it over our way. So we're here to basically just help us with this situation, because it's not healthy. It's not comfortable. It's terrible. And none of you would like to live into those conditions. I just know that.
Thank you for coming this evening. I want to task our town manager and staff to take a look at it and come up with some resolutional solutions. We'll also go to our Streets and Roads Committee and see what we can do with our money to.
We appreciate anything.
Thank you very much for coming. Anyone else? Okay, not hearing, we'll go on to response to the public, request for council approval of amendments of Unified District Order Studio Section 154, 54 related to guest houses. That is on the agenda.
What I was gonna say.
That was on the agenda, so we'll talk about that later. Comments, B comments and concerns regarding lot split regulations, next Thursday evening at 6 o'clock here, we are going to have a study session devoted to lot splits. You're invited to come and put your input. So we're not going to discuss it this evening, next Thursday evening, right here at 6 o'clock, a study session on lot splits. Okay, let's go on to current events summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. It's listed below. There may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council and questions may be answered. No action taken. Okay, item A, status reports by mayor and council. Does anyone on the council have a status report?
I do. Hi, everyone. It's good to see some faces in here. I wanted to let the graduating class. It was amazing. And over. And we acted special due to the governor's recommendations last Wednesday in regards to COVID. And I just think our community sponsors, because they came through in a huge way for these kids. First and foremost, Alchora Norte, Gary and his staff were incredible. Catering by Liz, Judd Sandwich Shop, Tom. The DJ was Lucy's. Donations for decorations were and the Reno House. Local alumni and the alumni parents are the ones who volunteered for this event, which I think is extra special. It was a huge way of Chino coming together. Olsen's Green, our local distributor, Ace Hardware, aerial drone photography by Spencer Coffin. CAFMA made a trip through with lights and sirens. And it was just a great time. And kids dancing in their prom dresses that they never thought they'd have a chance to wear. They had their one kid said, this feels more like a reunion. That's how long they've been separated. And I need to send a shout out to Maggie Titeback here in town and her husband Gary. They played a really key role in getting this going. And I can't explain to our local community volunteers for making this happen for these kids. It was a once in a lifetime opportunity. I won either. Thank you.
Mike, you?
No, we're good.
Corey, go on.
No, sir.
All right, thank you. I have something on COVID-19. We continue to recommend social distancing, face covering, hand washing, and stay at home if you're sick. I have received emails and phone calls from citizens that say I should mandate the wearing a face mask. And many more electronic and personal communications from citizens that want to be able to choose when they have to wear a face mask. The bottom line is, I can publish a mandate, but there's really have little effect as there is no way to enforce it. I can do it, but you can't enforce it unless I wanna go around and arrest citizens. I don't really wanna do that. That would really be something. Okay, the second one I have is for our police department. Chief, to Chief Win, Chino Valley Police Officer Staff, Chino Valley Police Department Volunteers. In the light of current climate around the United States, with respect to local police departments, the Chino Valley Town Council would like to take the opportunity to express our support for the Chino Valley Police Department, as well as for police departments and their staff nationwide. Chino Valley's Police Department, having been in place since 1980s, is comprised of approximately 26 sworn officers, civilian employees, and many dedicated volunteers. Although we are in a semi-rural community with a relatively small agency, the Chino Valley Police Department operates in a forward-thinking, professional manner to protect life and property in Chino Valley. Every day, our officers suit up to face the unknown, doing the best job they can for our citizens, relying on their training and mutual respect to get home safely. Every year was asked of police officers, and therefore more training is required to answer the call. Besides all the laws and procedures the officers are trained on, they are also trained on cultural diversity, the escalation tactics, and crisis intervention. The department also had training on mental first, health first aid, trained on various available resources when jail is not the appropriate answer or option. Our agency has a second, was a second in Riverby County to deploy body cameras for all officers. Although the department is perfect, they strive for professionalism and accountability, strong core values of our organization. Our police department understands that with the badge comes implied authority, and they do take this response, do not take the responsibility lightly. With that responsibility comes oversight on an officer's use of force. Every time use of force is utilized, it is reviewed at the chain of command for appropriateness. This level of scrutiny and accountability brings them credibility and acknowledges the dignity they strive to bring to their interactions. They have worked hard to earn our communities and councils' respect. We frequently receive feedback from our citizens regarding an officer going out of his or her way to deliver compassion along with the delivery of public safety. As residents of Chino Valley, we are also aware of some of the horrific things that have happened over the years that our officers have responded to. Most of us could not witness the multitude of things our police officers do, so to disparage their occupation and great service they provide is feckless. The officers and staff go home to families, often with heavy hearts, after witnessing a deadly car accident or reckless disregard for life. We as a council would like to formally acknowledge the Chino Valley Police Department and let them know they are appreciated. We have no appetite to defund our police department and will not join in with the others around the nation who, for our political reasons, have chosen discount the value that 99% of the people who have sworn to serve and protect bring to our community. Thank you for your job. Seriously, and thank you for protecting our community. Okay, item C is status report. Do you have any? Status report from town manager, Sealer Griffin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. A few items that you should, the write in candidates for the mayor or council member have until this Thursday, June 20th, to file with the town clerk's office. Number two home rule option is on the August 4th primary ballot. We're gonna have a short presentation tonight. Click on the big red dot and the news flash on the town's home homes with a registered voter will receive a voter information for June 26th. If a registered voter doesn't receive one, contact the town for a copy or view it online. And lastly, the Chamber of Commerce and League of Women Voters are sponsoring a virtual town council candidates forum on June 29th. That is also on our news flash on the homepage. I didn't know if you wanted to mention July 4th or?
Yeah.
It was decided that because of the weather conditions and also we've had a couple food trucks pull out for the 4th of July that we would cancel the 4th of July event held here in Chino Valley. So we'll have the pool hot dogs and potato chips for free to the kids for the first one. And, but we won't have the fireworks. We will move those festivities to the 50th anniversary in September.
So we plan to have a big blowout here on September 5th, which is the 50th year of our incorporation with the fireworks at that time and other things that are going on. And I have a Burger King hamburger here. I have the first one in Chino Valley. It is good. Burger King is open today. Hello.
Thank you.
Frank, status report by Public Works Director, Town Engineer Frank Marby regarding the upcoming capital improvements.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few of the capital projects staff is working on. Just wanted to give you a very brief update with no slides. The Three North Flood Control Project over in Appaloosa II has been awarded. The start of the project's pending some permission to get onto some property owners. We need some easements to get in those properties. And as soon as we get that, we'll start that construction. Probably right at monsoon season, I have impeccable timing when it comes to flood control projects. But we'll keep that one going. The school bus lane project is on the agenda for tonight, so we'll talk about that later. The rodeo drive improvements over in the business park are, they have completed the 60% submittal for the plans. We've had a meeting going over some comments, so they're making revisions, working towards the 100% plans for that. So that design is moving forward. The Old Home Manor Master Water Plan is, we have a meeting scheduled for that this Thursday to go over with the design team on that. And we should have an update for the utility committee when they meet in July for that project. That's moving forward. I think the schedule for that somewhere around November, December to finish that up. The septic receiving study, we were in the final draft, so to speak. We've got a few minor comments. And then we'll be wrapping that up and presenting that to the utility committee as well. So that's nearly 100% complete. And the last one, but not the least one, is the building projects with the utility shop and the bathrooms. The walls are up on the bathrooms. The trusses has been delivered and they're gonna start the roof. But just note that still depends on delivery of the actual bathroom fixtures. Delivery chains are still a little sketchy, so we're working on that. But the contractor is giving it their best shot to have that ready for the Labor Day weekend. So we're still shooting for that goal. And as far as we know, we think we can make it. But again, a lot of it depends on delivery of the supplies for that. So nothing, no major setbacks for that one so far. And that's it, unless anyone has any questions about anything that may be missing.
Not now. Questions?
No.
Questions, get down there. Corey, Lon, question?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Frank.
Thank you.
A report regarding upcoming ultimate expenditure limitation home rule option. And Mr. Duffy is gonna do that report. This is a very important item to us. It determines how much money of the revenues we'll have to spend this year.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before I start, I'd like to just remind you that the paper actually did a really good job on their home rule article. The Aaron Valdez wrote it. And in my career, it's one of the best ones I've seen. So he sort of boiled it down to simple English. The alternative expenditure limitation, as you know, sounds really complicated, but it's really not. Basically, and I just have a few short slides, in 1980, the Arizona voters approved a constitutional amendment, basically prescribing that each city, county, town, and community college district set an expenditure limitation. And the idea behind that And the idea behind that is they basically were going to say, here's your budget in 1980, and we're going to let you increase your budget by population increases and by inflation increases. And so the theory is, sounds pretty good, right? That government can only grow so much. Well, the problem is, in reality, small towns like Chino Valley in 1980, we only had $225,000 of our budget, and our population was really small. We've outgrown inflation, and our growth and inflation just hasn't kept up. So now we have a $24 million budget a year, and using the state imposed expenditure limitation, we can only spend about $10 million a year. So we've got a big gap there. So since 1985, every four years, we go to the voters, and they have approved the home rule option, which is one of our options to allow us to expend basically the money that we bring in every year. Our current option expires in June of '21, so we have one more fiscal year. So we have three, each community has three options. They have a state limit, a permanent base adjustment, or home rule. And the state limit is what's set by the formula. The permanent base adjustment adjusts one of the factors in that formula to bring it up, and a lot of communities do that. And then there's a home rule, which basically lets the elected officials, mayor and council, set the budget based on how much money we bring in every year to provide our services. So basically, home rule means we rule it, we decide at home how much our budget is going to be. So under the state imposed limit, the town could only spend about $9.8 million in '21, '22. But however, we're receiving a little over $23 million in revenues, and this is from our sales tax, our state shared revenues, our HERF revenues, and that's the money we use to currently provide all the services that we provide now. So essentially, we couldn't spend a little, almost $14 million that we still receive, we just have to put it in the bank. We couldn't spend it for two years until we took it back to the voters. So that creates a dilemma. It's like, you know, you earn $50,000 a year, but you can only spend 30 on your home. It's sort of hard to make rent and utilities, you know, because you're not bringing in, you're not, you don't have your full amount of income. So what that would do, currently, this is our budget here on the left side, which all the things that we do, we have water and sewer, debt service, public safety, general government, community services, that's the senior center, our parks, our roads, and then capital improvements that we do. So that's sort of how our budget looks right now. When the state imposed limit, we can only spend so much on the right. And Mayor and Council, you guys, your job would be to determine which things on this left side that we could spend, but as you can see, it's not going to go very far. We know we do water and sewer, we'd have to pay our debt service, and we'd probably, you know, look at public safety, but then all the other general government services and stuff would be drastically reduced. So that's the impact from the state limit versus home rule. So it all comes down to who do you want to control the town's future? And the state imposed limit that was based on 1980 data, that the states, that basically sets that spending cap, or your local elected officials? And that cap gets set every year with the adopted budget based on the amount of revenues that we're projecting. So a yes vote will allow the town to set a spending cap based on actual revenues and local needs for the next four years, and a no vote will require the town to set a spending cap based on the state formula for at least two years before we can bring it back to the voters again. Chino Valley voters have, every four years, adopted this, I think since 1985, and it's so they can do it. Now, we have lots of information available. We, Jamie, our town clerk, and me have been on the radio several times. We have a voter information pamphlet that is going out. It's also on the website. We have a town mailer that we're mailing to everybody. We develop a brochure, we have frequently asked questions, plus we're also available. So if you have a question, give us a call. We'll talk you, I'll walk you through it and show you exactly where the numbers come from. So with that, that's all I have this evening.
And our budget is on?
Tonight.
And it's on the website?
Yes, yes it is.
So you can look at our budget anytime?
Yeah, and our annual financial reports are all there.
All kind of financial reports and everything. Okay. Any questions? Okay, let's go on to consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Let's start on this side. Annie, do you have anything?
No. No.
All good?
Yep.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept consent agenda items A through E. Second it.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. All in favor. Okay, let's go into action items, number, under number seven. The council may vote to reset the public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38, 431, 03A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public, no action may be taken in executive session. Item A, consideration of possible action to approve a construction contract with Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Chino Valley Unified School District Improvement Project in the amount of $266,126.66 contingent on approval by the Chino Valley Unified School District Facilities Board. Mr. Marbury?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This project is a project for the school, for the school board. It's adjacent ways funds, so the way, my understanding is, and I think some of you could correct me if I'm wrong, that this comes through the town because of the way the money is with the adjacent ways. So we put out the bid for the school district and received two bids, and the low bid, as described, was from Asphalt Paving and Supply for $266,126.66. The project, as you can see up there, is for some bus lanes to separate the passenger vehicles from the bus vehicles over on the Del Rio campus at One West and Two North. So the facilities board actually needs to approve this, and their meeting is tomorrow, I believe. So in order to save time to get this through, staff recommends approving this contingent on the facilities board approval.
This is one of a number of projects we've done with the school district in the past to do their engineering side and help them with these construction projects. Yeah. Yes, sir.
The funds come from the school district.
Yeah. Okay, questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the construction contract with Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Chino Valley Unified School District Improvement Project in the amount of $266,126.66 contingent upon approval by the Chino Valley Unified School District Facilities Board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let's go to item B, consideration possible action to adopt ordinance 2020-881 to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 154, by amending the following section. Section 3.6 AR-15 Agriculture Residential, Section 3.7 AR-4 Agriculture Residential, Section 3.8 SR-25 Single Family Residential, 3.9 SR-2 Single Family Residential, 3.10 SR-1.6 Single Family Residential, and 3.11 SR-1 Single Family Residential by modifying the guest house requirements and removing Section 3.5 AR-36 Agriculture Residential in the entirety, and I dare anybody to read that again.
I apologize for that, very wordy.
Now you owe me.
Give me a buddy a burger. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a request to amend the town's Unified Development Ordinance by removing the AR-36 zoning district in its entirety and amending the guest house regulations. Staff feels that the proposed modifications to the guest house regulations will give the property owners more freedom to develop their property as they see fit. Okay. Thank you. So starting off with the removal of the AR-36 zoning district of agricultural residential 36 acre minimum, this zoning district, staff feels that this is no longer relevant within the town of Chino Valley limits. There are currently no properties within the town that hold this zoning classification, and the entitlements listed before you are the exact same entitlements that are represented in the AR-5 zoning district. As such, staff feels that, excuse me, in the staff's opinion, that no property owner will ever want to upzone their property from an AR-5 up to the 36 acre minimum requirement by this zoning district, and as such, we feel it should be removed from town code.
I just want to have some clarification.
Or you want to come on?
Wait, 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 wait. We're not ready for comments yet. Please.
My bad.
Let us run it from up here. We appreciate it.
Okay.
You have comment?
No.
Comments? Comments? Comments, gentlemen?
No, sir. All righty. So then we're going to continue to the guest house portion.
Okay, that's just one portion of it?
Just one portion, same item, one portion, same ordinance.
Is your comment about this portion, ma'am?
Yeah, I just wanted to know how it would affect us in a regular home.
Do you have a 36 acre?
No.
I would reckon that it would not affect you. It would, there's no property within the town limits that hold this zoning classification. So at this point in time, it's an erroneous zoning classification. So it's kind of, you know, administrative bookkeeping at this point. So that's how staff views it.
Thank you.
All righty. Excuse me here. Transitioning over to the guest house regulations, the town code defines a guest house as a living or sleeping quarters for the sole use of occupants of the premises, guests of such occupants, or persons employed on the premises. Such quarters shall not be rented and/or otherwise listed for income purposes. This definition is not being changed. What staff is proposing is amending the regulations that govern the size restrictions of a guest house. Under current regulations, depending upon your zoning district of either AR or SR, you're limited to either a maximum of 800 square feet or 1,200 square foot. This square footage is calculated under roof and not separated by livable or non-livable. As a brief, simplistic overview of what a guest house can look like in an SR-1 zoning district, you essentially have a 700 square foot livable portion, a 100 square foot non-livable, so it covered patio, porch, deck, whatever, to include or to be totaled out at 800 square Under the new proposed regulations, staff has prepared a 1,200 square foot livable maximum, or sorry, 1,200 square foot, yeah, livable maximum, or a percentage of the residence, primary residence, whichever is larger. This is going to be straight across all zoning districts. The only thing that will change is going to be the caveat percentage essentially. So under this new proposed regulation, it would allow for non-livable square footage and livable to be included in the, or sorry, excuse me. Under the proposed regulation, this would allow for non-livable square footage to not count towards the total square footage of a guest house. So a brief, kind of simple overview of what the proposed, or a proposed guest house could look like, you have a 1,200 square foot livable portion of the house, a 600 square foot non-livable portion of the house, a covered patio attached to the house, and then a RV garage, garage, anything as such that is deemed non-livable. So this is, we feel this would give the property owners, based on comments that we've received from community members, the direction and the regulation that they desire. So the language itself is pretty much the same across all zoning districts, with the only difference being the caveat percentage. In AR-4 and AR-5 zoning districts, the caveat percentage is recommended, or is proposed by staff, as a 75% square footage of the total primary residence, you would still have the 1,200 square foot total. So whichever is larger, if you have a 4,000 square foot guest house or primary residence, and you'd like to build a guest house, you're not restricted by the 1,200 square foot. You'd be based off of the 75%, so you can increase as you see fit. The single family residential aspects from SR-1 up to SR-2, this only applies to one acre or larger, so anything under that will not be permitted to have a guest home on site. That caveat percentage is, starts off at 50%, and that's of the primary residence itself. These are limits that are suggested by staff, but ultimately, it's up to town council's discretion as far as what they want to suggest, if they feel this is too small or too large. It'll ultimately be up to your decision on how you want to proceed. So some comments, questions staff has received regarding this is, can a guest house be rented? Answer, no. By definition, the town code, a guest house cannot be used for an income purpose or rented. Can I use a tiny home for my guest house? No, tiny homes, park trailers, park models, mobile homes, travel trailers, and recreational vehicles cannot be utilized as a guest house. This is primarily because they are built to separate standards, specifically with park trailers and park models, they're developed or constructed to ANSI standards opposed to international building code standards, so they do not meet the criteria for a livable structure. Can I utilize a manufactured home as my guest house? Yes, as long as it meets the building code requirements, it can be utilized as a guest house. And then can I construct two guest homes on my house as long as, on my property, as long as I'm within the allowable square footage? No, code dictates that you're allowed one guest house per property, so that's lined in town code. So right now, I'll open it up to questions or discussion from council as far as, anything you guys got?
I don't see a minimum.
There is no minimum. So typically, that's regulated through IBC. If I remember correctly, it's 400 square feet, but the building apartment would be able to go through that a little bit more in depth.
If you have questions, shout them out.
With this, if we are voting, passing this to me, would I? Structure, I guess.
Material for the guest house, the square footage, yes.
So hypothetically, a 4,000 square house.
Yes. And then you could get, you know, based on your zoning, whether if it's SR-1, you can have a 2,000 square foot guest house.
Anyone else?
You will? What's the?
You want to?
Come up to the microphone, please.
Come up to the microphone, and I'll recognize you when you come up, please.
Jay Bates, I'm in Chino Valley. What's the reasoning between not renting? I just wondered why that would be. I mean, it generates income for the town with rentals, they get a percentage. So it'd be a...
The gentleman's going to step right up behind you and give you that answer.
Pardon me?
The gentleman behind you is going to give you that answer.
Which means the second drawing should be used for family purposes only.
Any other questions?
So for a staff recommendation, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the town council to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 154, by amending the following sections. Section 3.6 AR-5 Agriculture Residential, Section 3.7 AR-4 Agriculture Residential, Section 3.8 SR-2.5 Single Family Residential, Section 3.9 SR-2 Single Family Residential, Section 3.10 SR-1.6 Single Family Residential, and Section 3.11 SR-1 Single Family Residential by modifying the guest house requirements and the removal of Section 3.5 Agriculture Residential 36 acre minimum in its entirety.
Thank you. Any other questions concerned? Yes?
I would just like to make one addition. If council feels that these percentages are too low and want to raise those, that is completely up to you. This was just a staff recommendation of baseline. So that, I mean, that's completely within your purview if you want to raise those percentages or square footages.
Should we discuss that? Does anybody want to speak to that?
Does anyone want to raise these percentage?
And right now, it's 1,200 feet for the SR-2.
Microphone, please.
Under the proposed amendment would be 1,200.
Over 75 up to 70.
So in single family.
Lon, are you speaking to the mic, please? Will you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to restate that for?
I would just, I just wanted to verify or, or make sure I understood the percentages. If the, if, if the, the primary.
So the percentage is based on whether the classification is single family residential or agricultural residential. Under agricultural residential, the percentage is seventy five percent of the total, of the primaries residence square footage. Then under single family residential, it's fifty percent.
Okay, so, right, thank you.
Any other? Make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash eight eight one to amend the Town Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance. Chapter one fifty four, certain sections related to guest house requirements. Second it.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Let's go on to item sixty one, public hearing regarding resolution number twenty twenty eleven sixty one. Relating to the town's final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And the proposed expenditure limitation for the same year in the amount of twenty four million, four hundred seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just have a brief presentation this evening on, on the proposed budget. That it's basically the tentative budget that we adopted a couple, a few weeks ago. This year's budget is actually down by about three and a half million dollars. We went from twenty seven nine seventy six down to twenty four four oh seven. And that's primarily the two million dollars that we moved from the general fund of the capital improvement fund last, this current fiscal year. We did not do that this year. So. Some of the, I just want to hit some of the highlights in this year's budget, instead of just focusing just all on the numbers. One, we've increased our transfer to HERF fund from a hundred thousand to six hundred and seventy five thousand. Our reserve balance is projected at the end of this fiscal year to be at forty four percent of our total expenditures. The town is only required to keep up fifty five percent of the expenditures. And so we have, even after this year's budget, we'll have a reserve of about five million dollars. We're required to have almost three million dollars. Understand that with the pandemic, we know that we're gonna have some sort of revenue decrease. And probably from our state shared revenues. So far, our sales tax has held pretty well. But we know HERF is gonna get hit, we know state sales tax, state income tax, and our vehicle license tax will get a hit. We're just not sure, and nobody can tell us for it. So this budget we're adopting is assuming that all our revenues are gonna stay about where we, we would have projected them anyway. The way we're reacting to it, though, is we're just not gonna start any projects, we're not gonna do anything until we know we're over that hump. And so far, I'm not too worried about it, just because we have such a large reserve balance for our rainy day fund. Which I think was really smart of council to let that build up throughout the years. Police Department, we have sixty thousand over the next two years to, to upgrade their radios. We're not gonna spend that money until we hear from a federal grant that might pay for a significant portion of them. Field five, we got fifteen thousand, a little refresh there. Some sprayer turf in the parks department and gravel, the community center, and essentially, like those, we're just gonna put them on hold until we know that the revenue's there. The aquatic center, one of the big projects we need to do is plaster the pool. We actually did get a quote for seventy thousand, but it's time that we replaster the pool. We have quite a bit in for HVAC roof and parking lot maintenance. The plan is to do like one roof a year. One HVA system a year as we go through our facilities, just to keep them up to speed. And hopefully, we'll have the memory park restrooms complete this year. In HERF, by transferring that extra five hundred and seventy five thousand over, we have a million dollars dedicated to road maintenance this year. And that's significantly more than we've been able to put on the roads in the last few years. We also have a crash trailer or message board budget in that department. In the capital improvement fund, we have a hundred and thirty from the ABFI drainage project, which is the pass through funds from the drainage. We continue to transfer a hundred and fifty for aquatics and two fifty for the police. The one more signal of a one twenty five, master plan of one thirty five. We've, we've set aside seven fifty for the gas line, Old Home Manor, and two hundred and fifty for the police department design, which will be in the next, in the July council meeting, we'll bring that to you. Water and Sewer want to complete their building. They've asked for a four by four pickup, and I say water and sewer because we split their costs fifty fifty. So each, each department will pay half. They have a belt press and the headworks, it's a little over three hundred thousand worth of work, but that comes from the WIFO repair and replacement fund. That we put money, since we've, since we've done the wastewater plant, we put about seventy five to eighty five thousand dollars a year in this repair fund. To pay for these expenses when things wear out. So we have about a million dollars sitting there, and this will, we can use this fund for that. So. And then we have seventy five for the septic receiving study, which I believe we're finishing most of that this year. And then in the asset replacement fund, which is a special fund that the town set up. For when we get insurance dividends, workers' comp dividends, or sales tax, audit revenues, or any miscellaneous one time revenues. By code, we're supposed to put it in this asset replacement fund. We have a balance of a little around four hundred thousand in it, I believe, right now. And we'd like to use part of that for another admin car for the building department, one for public works. And then a combination of a police car and an admin car. Police cars are running a little over sixty thousand dollars now fully outfitted. So that, and they need an admin car. So that's where we thought we'd pay for that fund. Final budget steps, on May twenty sixth, we adopted the tentative budget, which we published in the paper for two times and posted on our website. And so tonight, after the public hearings on this, we'll convene a special meeting and adopt the final budget.
Okay, I'd like to open this meeting to a public hearing on our town final budget. So I need a motion to.
I'll make a motion, we open up for a whole public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
I'm motion a second. We're now in a public hearing. All in favor say aye. Okay, any input, any questions, concerns from the public here about this budget? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public.
Make a motion, we close the hearing. Second it.
We have a second, a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Public hearing is closed. Let's go on to item D, public hearing regarding resolution number twenty twenty eleven sixty two. Relating to the statements and estimation of expenses. Of Town of Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement Districts for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Which constitute the budget of the district for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And addition the tax levy anticipated in conjunction with the budgets for a district. Mr. Duffy, why don't you tell us what the slid district is?
Well, this is the Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement District, which is basically a district made up of three different areas in the Bright Star subdivision. So it pays for the streetlights. We receive the electric bill. This shows up on the property tax, the owner's property tax bill. The county remits us the funds, and then we pay the, the light bill of it every year.
So essentially, it lights them up.
It lights Bright Star up, yes, sir. So on May twenty sixth, you adopted resolution twenty twenty eleven sixty, adopting the preliminary estimates and expenditures. And tonight, we'll approve the resolution adopting the statement of estimates and expenses. And then on July fourteenth, that's when we actually set the tax rate for the district. We submit how much money we need to the district. Or to the county, and then they come back with whatever the tax rate is. The numbers are pretty simple, actually, and they're, and they're been very, very consistent. We have, it's, the district is broken up into three sections. And as you can see, the, the actual expenses of two thousand, one thousand, eleven hundred have been really consistent. And, you know, the actual is probably nineteen hundred and eighty five dollars. So we're, but we collect just enough to cover it. I think in all in all, we're within about two hundred or three hundred dollars of being right on zero. So we just rounded to the nearest thousand. Now, this district three A must have built a few more homes because their expenses actually went up a little bit. We didn't collect enough to pay the bills this year. So we're gonna increase the amount of levy in that one by two hundred dollars next year. And so we just watch it, the county gives us the numbers, and then we know exactly the bills that each one's paid. So it's actually pretty simple to keep track of, of course.
Thank you. Questions?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Second it.
All in favor say aye. All right, we're, the public hearing is opening. Do we have any comments from the audience about this particular item?
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Little motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye. Public hearing is closed. Okay, let's move on. We need, right now, we need to adjourn this meeting and move on to a special meeting. So I, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a, make a motion, we adjourn this meeting?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye. Now we need a motion to open the special meeting. I mean, we adjourned the regular meeting, now we need to move into the special meeting. I'm gonna call the order, and then we'll have roll call for the regular meeting. Yes, go. Before I get more confused than I.
Councilmember Kelly is absent. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Croft.
Here.
And our town attorney is still present video.
Okay, now we're in the special meeting. We've had a call to order, we're going to item two to item, which is seven C. Consider a possible action to adopt resolution twenty twenty eleven sixty one relating to the town's final budget. For the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, and a proposed expenditure limitation for the same year in the amount of twenty four million, four hundred seven thousand, nine hundred. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty twenty eleven sixty one, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty one. Final budget and establishing the fiscal year twenty twenty one expenditure limitations. Second.
I have a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Let's go on to item seven D, consideration, consideration possible action to adopt resolution number twenty twenty eleven sixty two relating to the. Statements and estimates of expenses of the Town of Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement Districts for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Which shall constitute and are approved as a final budgets for the district for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, eleven sixty two related to the statements. And estimated of expenses of Town Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement District for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, which self constitute. And are approved as final budgets of the districts for the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Carries. Now we're gonna adjourn from the special meeting, and we're going to, a motion to move into the executive session. We're gonna adjourn from special meeting. And I, I guess I'll have to have a motion for that.
You make a motion, we adjourn from special meeting?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Now, I'm, I need a motion. We're gonna go into executive session.
Ten minute break, please.
Do you make a motion?
I make a motion, we move into executive session after a ten minute recess.
You have a second? Second, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. We're adjourned from the regular meeting, and we have fifteen minutes break till the executive session.
Hey, what's this?
I'm just not, I'm not used to being that humorous.